Yeah, we're starting. All right, Bothell City Council is back in session. We're starting AB 16-176, public hearing regarding campus master planning process expansion enabling code amendments. We have David Boyd, senior planner, to provide a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council members.
Oh, I'm sorry, David, didn't interrupt you. I'm officially opening the public hearing. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. This is the first, the initial public hearing on this issue. We had a study session on September 20th, and then there were some previous study sessions before the campus decided to table the process that we started into last winter and come back with this new process. I just wanted to set the stage a little bit and then turn it over to our campus representatives here tonight. We're basically focusing on three aspects here tonight. Setting the stage for the University of Washington Bothell Cascadia College Campus Master Plan, officially including this expansion area in the campus district. And then code amendments to enable a planning process that will create a master plan and a development agreement to guide future development on the campus. Just a little background, the campus was added to the downtown subarea at the beginning of the downtown planning process, and it's an important part of the revitalization strategy as shown in this figure from the downtown plan. The development of the south access and the evolution of the institutions has helped spurred campus growth and the need for development of a new master plan. So tonight's packet includes a draft ordinance, it includes planning code amendments, and council findings, as the mayor pointed out, appeared to be missing, but that was intentional. We wanted to get your feedback before we came to you with findings, so we'll bring draft findings on November 8th. The plan amendments are essentially what's shown on this page that does show the updated map, including the expansion area and updated photos and text. The code amendments also identify the expansion area and the fact that it will be, until the master plan is in place, it will continue to be governed by the general downtown corridor zoning that exists there now. And then the code amendments also include the enabling code amendments that are available. I can pull up on screen if council wants to get into that level of detail tonight. So tonight's process will continue with a presentation by the campus, and we're joined here tonight by Kelly Snyder from UW Bothell, Megan Walker from Cascadia, and the campus council and other campus staff. Then we'll open it up for council questions, public comment, any deliberations from council and direction to staff, and then there'd be a motion to continue the hearing to November 8th. So with that, I will turn it over to Kelly Snyder.
It's a pleasure to be here this evening, although not quite this late at night. We should have a few slides just to kind of set the context. You may have seen these a couple of weeks ago at your city council, but just for review. We're talking about the campus master plan as well as the development agreement. So why are we doing the master plan and development process? First is to make sure, I can read all these to you, but I'll just do some highlights for you. One, we want to make sure that we're engaging our community that surrounds the campus as well as on-campus in the development of the campus master plan. That is core and important to us. Got a little misstart last year. We are correcting that. We are sitting, we're hitting the reset button and we're starting fresh. We're putting our development on hold right now and pause and making sure that we think about what's going to happen for the next 20 years on the campus. What are the needs? What does that look like? Where should those things go on the campus? What are the heights, the setbacks, all of those things? We want to incorporate that as part of the master plan and the development agreement and incorporate that, as Dave has said, into the code. Once the processes are approved, that's what we're talking about with the council right now, the process only and the map. And then we'll go through the winter and the spring to develop that campus master plan, and then we'll come back in the summertime and talk with the council about what that looks like. The regents also have to approve this campus master plan and development agreement, as do the Board of Trustees for Cascadia College. We want to make sure we optimize the properties that we have, so we've added a few properties through ownership or master lease, bring those into the fold, so as we go through this campus master planning process that we think of this as in a total, a comprehensive way. So step one and two, that's what we're talking about right now, right? So we're talking about, let's think about the process and the map, as we've talked about. And then step three is really, we've started this process already. We've had at least one meeting so far with the community to talk about what should we have in this campus master plan? What do we see as in the future? We had a very similar conversation on campus with our faculty, at least with UW Bothell. They sent us about nine pages of ideas, very thoughtful and thorough in their thoughts, included everything from traffic and parking to saving trees and environmental concerns and educational offerings. What do we have on campus that can be part of our larger community? So we'll bring, this is a very iterative process with this campus master plan. We'll propose some ideas, test those out, see what those look like, get that community input, get your input, get our campus input, go through those iterations. We'll have an EIS process on this, and then bring all of those things under the campus master plan, and then the development agreement will be the details. The details are going to be really super important, and we want to develop those with our community on and off campus. We want to make sure that we are hearing what the community says about setbacks, about lights, about noises, about access points to buildings. Those are really crucial to us, and it's not just about what's adjacent to single-family neighborhood, it's all of the campus together. We need to be thinking about our neighbors, but also what's happening in the core of the campus. And then, as I mentioned, it'll come back for review, so lots and lots and lots of reviews. So coming back here, you'll see the campus master plan and the development agreement repeatedly and engaging. We want all of you to come to these meetings because we want your thoughts as well. So, and then the very last point here on this slide says that we are not going to move forward with construction of housing or with academic building at this point in time. We are seeking funding for academic buildings, both for UW Bothell and Cascadia, but that construction would not even commence, at least for a couple of years, because the state has limited resources, and we still have to go through a design phase for the next couple of years if we are awarded money in the next biennial budget. So this slide shows a different view of the schedule, and it is about reviewing and refining. That's a really important point that we reiterate over and over again. We want to make sure that we are proposing ideas, making sure that we hear what the ideas are, incorporating those, bringing them back out, and then refine them as we hear what the community has to say. This shows the properties that we are asking to be added to the campus district, and there are four properties. It looks like three, but it's actually four. So we're talking about what we refer to as Husky Hall and Husky Village, which is our current housing, and then the, what was referred to as the Marvin Properties, and those are actually two parcels. And Megan is here cheering me on. I'm sure either of us could answer any questions if you have them.
Appreciate it. So I have one person signed up for public comment, which is Greg Smith.
Didn't know what to expect, but, so I don't have anything to react to, but I just wanted to say that I hope that the spirit of the existing PUD would be utilized in the development, in the development agreement process and in the long-range plan development process. And I think that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like public? Mr. Ewing. Three times to the well in one night.
Patrick Ewing, 19612, 9th Place, Northeast Bothell. Well, thanks, Kelly, for the great presentation. I think it's great that the reset button has been pressed, and we're going to go through a master planning process. That sounds really exciting and something, you know, nice to know for the community, you know, what will be coming in the future, and the community will be, you know, part of the planning and good to know what will be coming in the future. So I'm looking forward to the process and hopefully it works. So, a couple of concerns. One of the things in the packet is the amendment process. So we're going to go through this long process involving the community and council, and I'm sure there's going to be some challenges, and the council's going to have to make some compromises perhaps. So we go through the whole process, and now we've got a development agreement in place. Well, the amendment to this agreement doesn't come back to council. It goes, as the department gets to decide if it's a minor amendment. A minor amendment is defined as not needing a supplemental EIS. So it's actually some fairly major changes that you can make that don't require supplemental EIS. Those amendments get approved by the department, which means the city planning department. If it's a major revision, then it has to, the threshold again is that it requires a supplemental EIS, that gets made by the hearing examiner. So these, to me, are non-starters. I think if you're going to take the time to work with the community and the campus to come up with an agreement, then if we're going to amend this agreement, it needs to come back through the council and the public. So that's the biggest concern. The second concern is how this process is all going to play out. I don't have a lot of experience with this type of development agreement. We've heard from the speaker that it's got to be approved in the end by the Board of Regents, so maybe it's not going to be successful and it's not going to work, so there's some doubt whether it's going to be successful or not. The PUD, actually, I think, has served the community very well over the last 20 years from the community standpoint. It's provided the framework for getting a great facility that the community appreciates and has had input when new development was going to occur. So protections for traffic, for parking, et cetera, et cetera. So this new agreement needs to have those same protections built in. So I'm not, it wasn't clear to me, the ordinance, it's apparently going to be passed in the next meeting, but I don't know exactly what it means. If it's actually going to kill the PUD at this point, and we have this period of time where there's nothing in place for development, that didn't make sense to me. So I think a better process would be to come up, instead of an ordinance, is a memorandum of understanding that we're going to go down this path, and at some point in the future, the PUD gets retired and replaced by this development agreement. But I don't think we could just retire the PUD at this point in time if that's indeed what you're being asked to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the public that would like to provide testimony? Go once. Okay, so now we're on to council questions, the staff, and discussion. Anybody who'd like to go first? Deputy Mayor.
So I also am concerned about the amendments, and I'm looking particularly at, let's see, 2B. Let's see, under, 2, "The department shall determine that a development is consistent with the campus master plan and development agreement when the development is, one, identified, oh, within an identified development site." Now, I'm hoping that means that there are agreed upon zones for types of development, but I don't know that that's true. So obviously, with the community concerns from this year, you know, that I can imagine perhaps a dorm might come up within the 20 years, but not one that's not necessarily in the master plan. So I think some reassurance that that kind of thing can't happen, and maybe I'm being overly cautious, but I'm pretty sure that the community's probably thinking the same thing. So some assurances in regards to that type of situation.
So you're right, that the development areas, the idea is that those would be zones of the campus, like the development reserve might be one of those zones. The master plan would establish what could happen in those zones, and then that would direct development moving forward. What exactly those are is, will come out through the master planning process. I'd also just wanted to address a couple of questions that were raised. This process, what we're asking for you to do this year does not retire the PUD. The PUD, in fact, the PUD may not need to be retired. We're basically establishing this new mechanism that PUD will likely remain there in the background. And so what we're, and the reason that we're doing this is, one, to expand the campus district so that they can move forward with this master plan with assurance that that's going to be part of it, and then establishing the process in broad terms for this master planning process. And certain aspects of it, like how major and minor amendments will be handled, can be tweaked again. We're setting a baseline now, we're proposing a baseline now, but through that master planning process, we can also change how we want to deal with those kinds of amendments.
I can just imagine a scenario where the build-out happens within a smaller amount of time, and then, you know, and we're, this is for 20 years, but at the rate of growth, I can imagine the build-out happening sooner than that. And so I just want to make sure we have something in place that works for everyone in case that happens.
Yes, and to go beyond that would be a major amendment.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Everybody's okay? Yeah? Everybody okay on this end? Yep, okay. So, reading the table, I didn't see where the decision where you can amend the development agreement would fall into the hands of the community development director. Can you explain, did that make sense to you, Mr. Boyd? We got a public comment that that's the case with the code changes?
Perhaps you can, Pat Snyder, the council did to the campus, has drafted most of it. It's at the very end there, on page 110 of your packet, page 13 of the code amendments. So that's where we talk about, actually, the minor amendment is addressed, starting on the previous page. And yes, that's the proposal that we're putting forward, that a minor amendment could be, would be an administrative decision, as it is now with a minor PUD amendment, and a major amendment would go to the hearing examiner. But again, that's what's being proposed now, and even if you adopt that now and through the master planning process, you feel like you want to handle that differently, there will be an opportunity for that.
Okay. Because it just seems kind of counterintuitive, I guess, that we would, so what is the difference between a minor and a major amendment? What's the threshold?
Essentially, an amendment that would meet the SEPA threshold, the threshold for requiring SEPA review would be a major amendment.
Just like SEPA application or environmental impact statement?
That actually remains to be seen, exactly how this master plan fits within the overall downtown planned action environmental impact statement. That'll be another thing that'll be determined through this process and through the EIS that the campus is doing as part of this master plan process.
Okay. And then, since we do have their counsel here, I'm just curious, why did we have to do this agreement to engage in a master planning process for the campus?
The question is why we're proposing this form of legislation?
Yeah.
The development agreement process is the process the state legislature created in 1995 as part of a big regulatory reform package. The City of Bothell adopted a development agreement code the next year, in 1996. It's the sort of accepted process for dealing with unusual projects that don't fit under the, you know, garden variety zoning. It's used quite commonly now. It's what Costco is using with Issaquah for its big development. It's what Sound Transit used with Seattle for the Capitol Hill redevelopment around the station. It's what King County and Snohomish County entered into over Brightwater. So it's the tool for dealing with sort of unusual situations. What we did here is basically propose that your code accommodate development agreement that would be tailored to the campus, because the existing, you have it in the code, it's been there since 96, but it needed to be tweaked in order to accommodate what's being proposed here. And so this is the enabling legislation that gives everyone the rules of the game to work with over the next six or eight months while the campus master plan is developed.
Okay, thank you. One other question for you, too. So it says on page 98 of our packet, page four of this specific item, it says, "Not applicable, proposed is exempt from SEPA per chapter blah, blah, blah." And we want to add, "Or if applicant is its own SEPA lead agency and has completed SEPA review." So I'm just curious, so is the University of Washington its own SEPA authority because it's the state?
Yes, and that language actually, all that does is merit what state law already says, because under the SEPA rules, when a public agency is the project proponent, it is the SEPA lead agency. So that is already the case. This simply makes the code reflect that in the context of this project. That's why the university and college are taking the lead in preparing the EIS. It's because, under state law, they are the SEPA lead agency.
And so we don't even review it, then? As the local government?
The local government is an agency with jurisdiction. You're just not the one who has to pay for it and engage the consultant and so forth, but you will certainly participate in the process.
Okay, those are all the questions I had. Dave, did you need anything else from us to build your findings?
If you have any input that would help us draft the findings, that would be helpful. Otherwise, we'll take our best shot at it and bring that to you for review on November 8th.
So I just had one thing, and I thought that was a really great illustration that you put up there about the original concept of the downtown with connectivity to the campus. That, yeah, that one right there. That never happened. That blue arrow there hasn't really been fully implemented, I would say, from my perspective. It seems like it's just kind of over the hill, next to the wetland type of thing, and I hope that we can make this happen in a big way with this master plan redevelopment and make, bring the University of Washington Bothell much more into the downtown redevelopment.
And this was meant to signify physical connections, but also just better working relationship, a close working relationship. So we are, I think we are making strides in that direction, and we are starting some discussions about improvements to the physical connections as well.
So that'd be like a 10-lane road right through the Sunrise neighborhood. Just kidding. I'm just kidding. It's just a really big arrow, so.
It's a giant fountain.
Okay. Is there anything else anybody wants to have added to the findings? No? On this side, outside, nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, oh, I need, I think I need a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to continue the public hearing.
To?
To November 1st.
There we go. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by?
Sorry, what date?
November 8th.
Oh, 8th, sorry.
There it is.
I looked at the wrong agenda.
Still, they got your second, okay. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew to move the public, continue the public hearing until November 8th. Please vote. Passes unanimously, with Councilmember Sandberg absent excuse. Our last agenda item is a study session, AB 16-177, study session regarding legislative agenda. And do we have an executive session tonight? Just so I'm watching the clock? Nope? Okay, good. Mr. Jean, take it away.
Well, I gave you copies of all the material from Association of Cities, suburban cities, Chamber, Eastside Cities Group, and there's a whole bunch of things that everybody wants. I think the idea is, though, to boil it down to what are the priority items we want to talk to our legislators about. There's about five areas that seem to pop up: fiscal sustainability, transportation, economic development, education, and quality of life. The question I would have is, is there anything in all of the attachment ideas that rises to a priority for the city that should come forward? Because I kind of short-cutted with this one-page summary what I thought were the priority items, but if there's anything else the council wants to bring forward, that would be the time to talk about it. Also, there are some things that, after we talked about it a little more at staff, there's some things that I've got here that maybe you want to push back down. For example, under transportation, we all would like to see restoring the Public Works Trust Fund funding, but more important to us right now would be retaining the TIB grant and the money that we're tracing down for the mainstream enhancements. And the reconfiguring the I-405 express toll lanes to a single lane and expanding general purpose lanes might be a good idea, and the Chamber certainly likes the idea, but we're actually asking for tolling funds to do the hard-shoulder surface. So it'd be almost, you know, inconsistent for us to ask for one or the other, even if we like the idea. So it might be one to bump off. And then the same thing with the SR-522 congestion impacts. I mean, I think we all intuitively think it's there, but we don't have the data really support it. But meanwhile, we're asking for BRT funding, you know, we might want to take those off. The other one that I had on there, under economic development, was expanding the lift funding. We're not going to get any more lift funding, but the idea was for us to champion it. I think a better way for us to do that is put together some kind of a white paper and work through AWC and try to lobby the legislature to expand it, but we don't need it from a legislative policy for Bothell. And then the last item, under quality of life issues, the funding to address the cost of the fellow meaners, as police call them, and marijuana violations, those are general policies that AWC is going to pick up anyway. But mental health and addiction counseling, those are probably issues that are there. So we can do this one of two ways. We could, with those comments, clean this up, and we're done. Alternatively, I've got dots over here, and I've got the same thing, and we could give each dots, and you set the priorities. So however you want to proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. I kind of like the dot idea, unless somebody has a better idea about how we want to do this. I do think there is one nuance that I, for the fiscal sustainability piece, we can talk about whether we want this in there or not, but just to say, raise the 1% property tax, I think it'd be better to use terminology like the, I think it was SCA's version, where it says, "Address the property tax cap," instead of just raising it or eliminating it.
Address the tax cap problem?
Yeah. So that's one of my suggestions. Does anybody, would anybody not like to do the dot process? So we can try to get this over with quickly. We can put those dots up there, and people can add them up later and figure out what our top four things are going to be. I think it'd be better if we just tell the city manager how many things we want on the legislative priorities, because this is probably more, this is more than we've ever had in the past with this one pager.
And I had one to suggest.
All right, Deputy Mayor. All right, Deputy Mayor? It might be on the list.
Well, I mean, it's kind of on the list because it talks about support for AWC priorities, but I do think the updating the Public Records Act is important. It was, I believe it was on our list last year and for consistency, I think which would remain.
And I do think that's on the AWC list.
It is, it is, but I just thought it was important enough to be on its own.
Is that on your list on the bulletin board over there?
Only as a part of the AWC list, not?
It's not standalone, okay. Does anybody else have any input on this? Councilmember Freed?
Yeah, I do. Been down to the legislature a few times in my life and spending 10 to 12 minutes with the legislator, you really have a limited amount of time, especially if there's three council members, which is the max that you can have at a time. Kelly knows this better than anyone in this entire room. This list is extremely too long. I'd love to see that we actually take, if we want to be aggressive, it would literally be taking each one of these titles, the fiscal responsibility or sustainability, transportation, economic development, education, community quality of life, taking those titles and only choosing one item underneath each. For me, it would be to protect the shared revenue streams with liquor and marijuana. For transportation, I agree with the city manager, how to retain the TIB grant funding. For economic development, the lift, expanding lifts has been an extremely impactful tool that we have used. With education, providing capital and program funding for high-demand, high-paying degrees at U of Bothell Cascadia. And for community quality of life, I'd love to support funding to address costs of municipal criminal prosecution. That's relating to some new topics that we, as a council, have been talking about this year. I just think by having this long list, we water down any impact that we're going to have in a 10-minute meeting. So if we could focus our time, get straight to the point, in years past, we've even limited it down to only three of these bullet items because that's the reality that we deal with if we're down there for two days. So that's my recommendation, is just go with one bullet point under each title, and I still think that's a lot to discuss.
And do you have an opinion about just doing the dot method and trying to keep it, boil it down to four things?
For me, I like the dot method, but what becomes difficult is what if I'm given four dots? We're each given four dots. We may find that everything that we focus on is fiscal responsibility. Maybe that turns out to be all right. I think it's nice for the legislature legislators to hear on at least a couple different topics from us, so.
And we'll have another bite at this thing on November 1st, it looks like, so it'll come back. Councilmembers, Baybee?
Great, thank you. I agree with Councilmember Freed. I've been going down, wearing different hats for 30 years to lobby the Hill down there. And it's about having that short, concise message. The only thing that I would do is maybe under economic development, excuse me, I would have that white paper like the city manager suggested in support of lift and have that to give to them, but have our emphasis be the MAHA funding because that is important to us. But by also presenting that white paper to show that we, you know, we support that lift funding as for something for them to read, I think the MAHA funding is important. We're still looking for some of that stuff and that's the only difference that I would have with what Councilmember Freed presented.
Okay, so anybody over here have a opinion or are you guys ready to go play some dots? Let's play some dots. You got the dots ready? See, Major? So we're going to come off the dais, but we'll be right back here in just a second.
Do we need to extend?
No, go fast. You want another dot each?
No, no. I want to give one to you.
No, 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 I'm not God-fulfilling. Put a dot on his nose. Here, you can put the stuff here, Del. I've got trash. And I've got lunch with Tris on Thursday, so I can give her her dots.
So Councilmember Sandberg will get her dots?
She'll get her dots on Thursday and then we'll put this in final.
Okay. Hopefully there's a break at 4:00, but I think what you heard from the guys that have been down to the state a few times now, that it's quick, you only have a certain amount of time, so.
Yeah, I've been there, done that.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I think we're at the end of this agenda item. Is there anything else on our agenda? We have no?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just real quick, like, wanted to give you an update on the storm update, which turned out to be a non-event, but fortunately, I think, it turned out to be a good activation exercise of our emergency operations center and we were ready. We had people on call and if flooding or trees and power went down, we were there, but fortunately it didn't hit real hard. Peter might want to give a comment on Beer Fest, but that, I kind of like the beer stew idea. It was kind of, the crowd was, we had a pretty good crowd down there. The LTAC committee is reviewing its criteria and will be bringing some recommendations back on that. And Barbara started the Bothell Buzz, which is our little five to 10-minute little video vignettes. And we, the first one, of course, was timely with streets and sidewalks. We want to do our next one on parks, open space, and the update on the Wayne Golf Course. So we'll be starting to work through a series of little short video vignettes called Bothell Buzz. So Peter, anything on the Beer Fest?
Well, three of you were there, but you know that we had about 650 tickets pre-sold. We were planning for 1,600 people. Forty to 50 of those asked for a refund because of the weather. But then after we willingly, gladly, Chamber provided their refund to them, another 50 still bought online. But the most remarkable thing is that between 200 and 300 people walked up and bought tickets the day of. So overall attendance was between 900 and 1,000. We don't have the final numbers yet. The 23 breweries that we had went down to 21 because two of those had to drop out. The four food trucks went down to two, again, for the same reason. And then the three bands that we want to have play, we had to cancel each one of them and had two much smaller live musical acts instead. The Chamber is very happy with the results, especially given the circumstances. And Del was, Councilmember Baybee was at an LTAC meeting this morning. We'll be getting an after-action report and some final numbers for what we made on the event, which is not going to be much, we probably actually lost a little bit, but under the circumstances, that was considered to be an acceptable expense just for the sake of keeping the momentum of the Beer Festival going for next year.
And we drank all the beer?
We did.
All right, good. All right, is there anything? Oh, Councilmember Baybee?
It's just one thing I think that's worth sharing. I had a comment from somebody at the Beer Fest when I was down there. They go, "Del, Bothell City Hall is the coolest place to have a Beer Festival in the parking garage during stormageden." So they thought it was really cool that we were still able to pull it off and by using the parking garage to do so. So it was, a lot of people were really commenting on, it was great to be able to continue to have it and it was kind of a cool venue.
Yeah, it was interesting to drink beer where I parked my car to come to council meetings, but that's interesting. All right, anything else for the good of the order? Motion adjourned? Anybody? Moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Place your votes. Passes unanimously, Councilmember Sandberg absent excuse, adjourned.